The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website...
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance, and those watching on TV at home. And welcome to the November 21st, 2022 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Start by introducing the board. Unfortunately, Selectwoman Levy Rantriolov had a conflict and is unable to attend this evening. To my right, the Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening, Joanna. And I'm Nico Papakosinides. We'll jump right into public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come up and make comment to the Select Board. We do ask if your comment is relative to anything on the agenda that you wait till that agenda item comes up. I'll pause for a moment. And seeing no public comment, we can move on. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening, nor do we have minutes. The minutes will be available at our next meeting, December 5th, so we can take up the approval at that time. We do have two appointments, the same individual. Mr. Alan Mangan, who we interviewed at our last meeting, was interested in being considered for two committees, one of which was the Water Sewer Advisory Committee, and the other was the Facilities Advisory Committee. Mr. Mangan was very excited to join both, and there is a need immediately for new members on both committees. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Alan Mangan to the Water Sewer Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Can I second with a question?
Mm-hmm.
That's a full member. That's not an alternate.
That is a full member.
Thank you.
Both of these are full members.
Thank you.
And was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes 4-0. And I would also entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Alan Mangan to the Facilities Advisory Committee, which is a full member, to a term to expire April 30th, 2025.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. And we thank Mr. Mangan.
Very much. Thank you.
For his engagement, and he did agree for the record to serve on both committees simultaneously. Also, we received a letter from Renee Allen, the Chair of the Energy Committee, to notify the Select Board that in accordance with the recommendation by Selectwoman Levy Rantriolov, they've created two spaces for student voices on the Energy Committee. And this would replace the one original student position that was recently vacated. And we would like to welcome two Exeter High students, Olivia Shore and Neela O'Brien, for accepting the new student co-lianzons to the Energy Committee position. So welcome aboard to both Olivia and Neela.
That is so exciting.
Is it? I know. They are very excited. We are too.
Have you met them yet, Selectwomen?
Yes.
That's so great. I'm so excited.
We also had a member from Kensington that came in to see how we do our work.
Oh, I love that.
And organize in another town. Maybe East Kingston. I don't remember.
Fantastic. So let's jump into our discussion items this evening, the first of which will be the second reading for proposed town ordinance, a single-use plastic ban. And I would entertain a motion at this time to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Public hearing is open. And before we hear from Sustainability Advisory Committee Vice Chair Chris Zigmund, I would like to note that for the record, in our packet, there are three letters of support from Sarah DeWitt, Anna Grazer, and Betsy Ferguson. So with that, Mr. Zigmund, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this important topic. As you mentioned, this is our second reading of the ordinance, and the last time, we provided some of the facts about the pervasiveness of plastic pollution and its impact on the environment, wildlife, and human health. Tonight, we're going to offer a shortened version with emphasis on the need to take action, to do something, and to take the first steps toward a solution. This is Nils Boland. He's the Swedish engineer who holds the patent, along with Volvo, for the modern three-point seatbelt. And while seatbelts and the data supporting their lifesaving value go back more than a century, it was his design in 1959 that set the world on a course for better automobile safety. The seatbelt remains the single most important contribution to the safety of the history of driving. Yet, today, what we see as ubiquitous wasn't always accepted. There were thousands killed and injured every year for decades, in spite of the reams of data that demonstrated that your odds for survival go up 50% just by wearing one. All along the way, reason upon reason had been presented on why not to wear one. Yes, they mess up your shirt, they are uncomfortable, and maybe even a little inconvenient. Interestingly, when Volvo invented the three-point seatbelt, they offered it up for free to all automakers. They saw this as a critical lifesaving tool that was more valuable that way than to make a profit on it. And all but one of the American automakers, that was Nash, if anybody remembers Nash, fought mandatory seatbelts every step of the way since the late 1950s. Most claimed it was too costly, it would hurt profits, and buyers wouldn't pay for it anyway. Voters fought it too. Voters across the country fought mandatory use through the 90s, arguing it should be a personal choice. There was plenty of conflation between individualism and common sense. But the seatbelt became federally mandated in cars in 1968, and the required usage fell in line in the years since. With the teaching and enforcement of their use, it's to the great benefit of society. However, it was a long, deadly, and incremental road to get there. So many obstacles and deaths along the way. And we wondered, why did it take so long? We had the data, we had the solution, but we lacked the will. In 1972, only 18% of drivers buckled up. We had to accept the data. We had to change habits. We had to pay a little more, and we had to develop the collective will. And after decades of promotion and legislation, today, 91% of Americans wear their seatbelt. And the numbers are clear. 375,000 lives have been saved with seatbelts to date. It's common sense, right? Why wouldn't you? So why am I telling you all this stuff about seatbelts when we're here to talk about single-use plastics? Well, we see the single-use plastic represents sort of our next seatbelt moment. Only worse, with far greater, more permanent harmful consequences. That's all right. Plastic is visible in every aspect of our day. Yet, plastic has only recently been part of human lives. It was introduced in the food sector in the 1950s. The single-use plastic bag was introduced in the 1970s. The use of plastics has exponentially grown so much that today, more than 50% of the plastics ever produced have been produced just since the year 2000. We've heard the alarm bells for decades, but continue to do little to address it. In 1997, the Great Pacific Garbage Patch was discovered. This floating patch of garbage was documented to be more than two times the size of Texas. And for the geography buffs in the room, that's about a half a million square miles. And for local context, that's about 53 states of New Hampshire, or 13,329 Exeter's of floating garbage in the ocean. In 2011, we discovered that there are actually five gyres of large plastic debris in our oceans. Rotating ocean currents kind of draw the plastics together in these large concentrated areas such as these. And by the way, these plastics are not to scale. Today, we refer to plastic smog or clouds of microplastic. These microplastic particles are the remnants of larger plastics that break down and are found in our oceans. As we shared last week, microplastics are literally everywhere, in the bellies of fish and seabirds, in our food and water, in our human bodies as well, deep in the regions of human lungs, and the plastics cover our beaches. Also, as we mentioned last week, we can't recycle our way out of this. The rate of recycling can no longer keep rate with the plastic production. Up to 50% of the 3 million tons of plastic produced yearly are used for single use, only for a few minutes, then discarded. Reduction of single-use plastics is really the only effective way out. The proposed ordinance, which we'll walk through in just a moment, is our chance to do something, to do good. Changing habits is uncomfortable. It's inconvenient. A few things might cost a little more. We'll need to do things a little bit differently. But like the seatbelt, living without single-use plastics will become a healthy habit. The good news is that there are alternatives for every category of single-use plastic. And the Sustainability Advisory Committee is here to partner with the community to make this transition. The committee is not simply seeking a ban on plastics, but offering a plan to provide guidance and support across the community to help with solutions for both municipal departments and civic organizations. In the seatbelt example, compliance or non-compliance had a relatively small, if not sometimes tragic, footprint. With single-use plastics, the difference between action and inaction is vast. This is our opportunity to participate in saving ourselves and our community for the next generation. This is an opportunity, not a penalty. This is one of those things we can do both in our own best interest and in the best interest of others. We recognize it will not be easy. As the various surveys detailed that the last meeting indicate, there will be impacts with this policy. But we think Exeter residents are up for it. Exeter residents repeatedly stand up in support of sustainability initiatives. We believe this community will not only support this ban, but will support vendors, even if the elimination of plastics causes a need for vendors to offer their prices, their products at higher prices. So as we step into the ordinance language, I'll leave you with this. We have the data. We have the solutions. But do we have the will? And with that, I'll turn it over to Kristin.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Kristin.
Oops. Kristin Murphy, the Conservation and Sustainability Planner for the town. So my role tonight will be to step through the ordinance, much as we did the last time, for its second reading. As an overview again, this ordinance, as written, would apply only to town-owned property and town-permitted events.
Yeah.
It is modeled after a policy that was adopted by the City of Portsmouth in 2019. Following the rewording of it and kind of drafting it in a way that better applies to... We simplified it quite a bit and created language that applies a little bit better and fits Exeter. I developed two surveys. So I'm going to take this off. So because it only applies to town property, there are basically two user groups that would be involved, and that's town staff and departments, and then permatees who use our facilities for a variety of events. So I crafted two surveys, sent those surveys out. We went over them at the last meeting, so I won't step through that unless I do have them in here if we want to jump to them. And then, following the surveys, members of the Sustainability Committee and I met with individuals who requested additional time to discuss the policy, who had questions, and for us to better understand some concerns that were presented. And then we modified the policy to address those concerns. Next slide. So, as written, I guess I am questioning, is it possible to skip the definitions or shall we read through the full language? Is there a preference?
Well, at this point, the motion is going to be adopt Section 24.00, the distribution of single-plastic bags, food service products, and polystyrene food containers on town property. This has been out here for a week, but if you feel that we need to read more to assist the public in understanding it, I'd be happy to do that when we make the motion.
Okay. Are there any key parts of this you want to hit, Kristin?
So my thought was to skip just the definitions and then go into the policy itself, if that's suitable.
Is that reasonable for the board?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Okay, so the purpose... Can you go back one? So the purpose of this policy, "The Town of Exeter recognizes that limiting the distribution and subsequent disposal of single-use plastics through reduction is necessary to protect human health, to preserve the natural environment, and to promote sustainable and ethical practices regarding material waste." Next slide, please. And those are continued definitions. Next slide. Okay, so this is the meat of the ordinance. 24.02, Distribution of Single-Use Plastics on Town Property. No person shall distribute a prohibited single-use disposable item at any town facility. Town property, town-managed or sponsored event, or activity authorized through special permits issued under the authority of the Town of Exeter Select Board, unless otherwise allowed under exceptions in 24.03. So those prohibited single-use disposables are listed as: single-use plastic bags, single-use plastic food service products, and those were all defined above, single-use polystyrene containers, also known as Styrofoam. So we have a couple of exceptions. The next category is product exceptions. So we're proposing to accept reusable bags, single-use compostable food service products, packaging materials for food safety reasons added at the site of business or a processing facility. Some examples include wrapping around meat, seafood lettuce mix, or other perishable products. And the last one, products where alternatives to the prohibited items do not exist until an alternative is identified. Thank you. The organizational exemptions we've included. All town departments or vendors may distribute their remaining inventory for nine months following policy adoption. Items used by emergency responders or human-service nonprofit organizations. Prohibited single-use containers brought by staff or customers themselves. And then we added, "Exeter Parks and Rec Department will work with the Sustainability Committee to develop a transition plan." The last category, penalties and remedies. In addition to any other penalty or remedy permissible by law for violation of this ordinance, the following shall apply. If the town determines a violation of this ordinance has occurred, a written warning will be issued. Number two, upon second or subsequent infraction of this ordinance, the town interprets this as a direct violation of the vendor permit and cause for refusal to approve a permit. Is this one me? Yep. Or I can continue if you want. Okay, so in addition to developing the policy, as Chris mentioned, the Sustainability Committee is very highly motivated and interested in being a support entity to help individuals transfer through this process. They are now working on a source list for product alternatives that we'll make available. We are seeking replacement sources for water bottles. Some solutions that have been discussed, and we're starting to explore our partnership with local brewing company to offer canned water. We don't have details on cost or if this is viable yet at this time. Or seeking price points for reusable water bottles. I met with the trustees of Swayze Parkway last week, and they were supportive of exploring, if I can secure grant funding, extending... Right now, there's a spigot at Swayze Parkway at the Park Street sidewalk, or yeah, sidewalk. And they're supportive of extending that closer to Swayze Parkway itself. So that would mean a water source could be available near the ban stand. Let's see, in 2022, the Chili Fest offered a great model for how this transition could occur. They had multiple composting facilities there. People were there to monitor the compost bins. And a dramatic amount of single-use plastics were avoided through that process. And then lastly, you know, through the committee, this was raised at one of the meetings, but it was felt that we've learned some lessons through COVID. When COVID hit, people stepped up to support restaurants because they knew they weren't spending as much as they would if they went out to eat. And so what they did was they tipped more. They showed up for businesses, they supported businesses, and we believe that residents in Exeter will continue to do that by supporting higher prices, should it be needed. Yeah, that's it.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. So this is the public portion of the hearing. At this time, this would be an opportunity for anybody to make public comment, ask questions, before we bring it back to the board. If you'd just state your name and address for the record.
Scott Ruffner, Eleven Hall Place in Exeter. So I'm somewhat familiar. I watched the presentation from last week. And in talking with a lot of the vendors that we work with through the team, organization, for us, this is not an issue. At our events, when there has been collaborators available, we've always wanted to have water stations and not use water bottles. So that's something, hearing that you guys are looking to be collaborative, that's great. We had a nonprofit, I think, called Earth 360 or something like that, that we worked with in the past. And so that's no issue for us. Just some of the feedback that I got from some of our vendors that I don't think participated in this survey, you know, is obviously just price point issues, certain types of food that, you know, they've looked into the packaging, and they have concerns with their price points. Memories Ice Cream, Cafe El Camino that also does the farmer's market. So I think the education piece and the collaborative piece is going to help with all of that. It's just when it's these individual vendors, my only concern is just that it doesn't scare anybody off before we can get them to collaborate. And obviously, a lot of these guys, you know, that I talked to, they knew more about it than I did. They've done the research. And, you know, some of them use, I think, Oba. I think the majority of their packaging is eco-friendly. It's bottled water that they sell. And then there were some people in between that used, you know, a mix of the two. And then there's some people, like Memories Ice Cream, that he said they've tried some products, and it didn't work, and they're, you know, it's a fluid situation. So that's the concern as far as vendors go. If there's solutions there, if there's water stations, I would be excited to make that part of the culture of our events and not have bottled water at all, and even promote that the stations are there, and even work with you guys to find, you know, whatever you recommend for the best reusable bottles, and maybe even have them for sale, and integrate it into the culture of the events. I mean, I think the biggest pushback that I can think of of just other groups is that because of how cheap the bottled water is, so many people have integrated that into their fundraising aspects. I was just at a Pine Street Players play on Saturday, and they normally would do their events in the town hall. And during the intermission, I looked around, and there was 200 people in there, and probably 75 were carrying a bottle of water. So, you know, just changing the culture, and I think you're probably right that if there's alternatives, and the prices are up, and it's still into their fundraising, but it's within the ordinance, I think that would be great. As far as, I'm assuming this would also fall under the mobile vending at Townhouse Common. And I know, you know, Oba's there a lot. They definitely sell bottled water. So, you know, I think that would have to be integrated early so that when people apply to be a mobile vendor, you know, they know what's going on and that you guys can help transition that. And then, what else? Town Hall? I mean, I think Town Hall would definitely need a water station. That would be a big plus there as well. Yeah, that's my two cents.
Great. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Anna. I'm on Warren Avenue in Exeter. And I just want to thank Kristin and the rest of the folks who have worked on this ordinance proposal. I'm really excited about it. As Scott mentioned, it's a really wonderful opportunity for collaboration among different organizations in our town, different departments within our official town government, and individuals. It's very exciting to me. Just a couple of points of feedback that I wrote in my letter, but I want to emphasize here. One is that at my cafe, I have surveyed my customers on their use of single-use compostable products. And I found that 80% of those compostable plastics actually go to landfill, unless they're put into an industrial process compost facility, such as what Mr. Fox offers to our town. They're going to mummify in landfill. So, and I don't think the ordinance has suggested this at all, but I just want to be really clear to people as we move forward into culture-changing and culture-shifting that we don't look at compostables as the end-all, be-all. In reality, the reusables, I brought my reusable cup here, are really the end goal for reducing our use of plastics and waste that cannot decompose, which is more than just plastic. So especially in town departments, I would love to see, not necessarily as part of the ordinance, but as part of practice between departments and in the town budgeting level, introducing options or resources to encourage and foster use of reusables, such as stocking reusable cups, or somehow incentivizing carrying reusable cups. I'm happy to see the Select Board has your bottles up there. And I also, one final note, I saw that on the survey you did, that disappointment was expressed that Styrofoam could no longer be used. And I just want to say I'm really disappointed to hear that Styrofoam is even still in use and in stock in some of our town departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any other members of the public? Mr. Ruffner?
Yep. Sorry, Scott Ruffner, Eleven Hall Place. One other thing I forgot is that I think now that we do have our Town Arts and Culture Commission, and a lot of what we've been working on is building relationships with all of the other groups and organizations in town, and also working with Greg in Parks and Rec on permitting and streamlining that. So I think that commission would be the logical collaborator with you guys as well on helping to facilitate, you know, working with some of these organizations kind of preemptively that might be affected by this. Is there one more public hearing on the ordinance?
December 5th.
December 5th, okay. Because we meet second Tuesday, so we won't meet until after that. But I think even if, you know, that's just out there that we're sort of involved somehow.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
A question for Mr. Ruffner.
Mr. Ruffner, Selectwoman Gilman has a question for you, if you want to come up to the podium.
You may not be able to answer this offhand, so... But I'm going to ask, from the vendors that you have experience with, is there a business model, I suppose is the question, for a vendor to provide something that belongs to... model, I suppose is the question, for a vendor to provide something that belongs to an event or, um, you know, as part of the admission price to give a reusable bottle, uh, water bottle for the event or the?
I mean, I, I think that would be a great, I mean, I personally don't know of that, but I mean, I know that's something, you know, that, that would be perfect for us as a collaboration, you know, to even make it part of the marketing of the event and that it's, you know, and will include that no dogs allowed. And that's the big issue. But yeah, I mean, that's certainly, you know, to me, that's the best way to really change the culture and get it out there is, is make it part of the event and not just, you know, this little rule that somebody might hear about when it's an issue, like get ahead of it.
Well, maybe that's something your committee can work on with the groups that you work with, just to suggest it, you know, don't?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Thanks.
I mean, it could even be in the permits. I mean, there can be language in the permits that, you know, says, you know, this is available. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ruffner, good question. Anna?
I just want to add from my research on these, uh, re, single-use items, the aluminum water bottles that you can buy even now at the, the gas station or grocery store next to the single-use plastic bottles, aluminum is 100% recyclable and almost 100% of aluminum is in fact recycled. So at the very least, um, because from custom-printed, custom-produced promotional bottles are awesome, but they might be really expensive upfront, um, at the very least, I would recommend buying, um, or offering even through Parks and Rec, the water bottles that have a twist top and those can be reused an infinite number of, or almost infinite number of times rather than a, a tab-top aluminum can.
Great, thank you. Anybody else in the public? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Sub moved. Second.
Motion is second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, comes back to the board. Um, Mr. Dean, before the board deliberates, did you have anything you wanted to update us on?
Yeah, so basically, we had a meeting last Friday, an internal meeting with, uh, Kristin and Greg Bissin from Parks and Rec and Melissa Roy and myself. And we were talking about Parks and Recreation and how they would be able to follow this ordinance. And there were some questions raised about that. And I know that, um, it's a very important concession for the Parks and Rec Department. They sold, for example, last year, they sold 1,500 bottles of water and 800 bottles of Gatorade. And the concern that they had was that by eliminating that income stream, um, it would put a serious dent in the concession operation. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I know that, I, um, I guess I'm seeking some clarification on, does the plan or the ordinance actually, um, impact Parks and Rec? And if so, kind of what the plan is to bring them into the ordinance?
Yeah, so, so right now, the language as it stands, here, let me pull it up. Is intentionally vague. It says, "Exeter Parks and Recreation Department will work with the Sustainability Committee to develop a transition plan." And my impression, and members of SAC are here, but my impression is there's, there's no timeline to this. Greg has talked about doing some major changes already, so he's installed, um, and was waiting on parts so it didn't get running this year, but he's installed a refillable water bottle station there. He said that price point wise, he can easily find, um, compostable, um, utensils. He's willing to get rid of straws. The big hangup comes down to water bottles, um, and Gatorade. And so, um, so the reality is, we know that there will be impacts. We are looking for solutions. So I, there, there are some reusable, that, that's a really good point about the, um, cans versus reusable water bottles. That's something that, you know, I hadn't thought about, but, um, even locally, you can buy proud source water, for example, at Shaw's and it's like 60 cents a unit. It's more expensive than what he spends on, um, you know, what he spends on, I think it's like $5 for a 24-pack, so it is more expensive. But we're willing to work through solutions. There's a lot of unknowns, um, in terms of what solutions will work, how much they'll cost, um, and we don't have the answers. And so that's why intentionally the language in here was kind of vague in terms of timeline.
Can I just ask two, two quick questions? One is, and you sort of answered it, but do we, can we get more precise, the cost difference between the single-use bottle now and the proposed cans?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
And I'm going to tell you why I'm asking. And it's because I, you know, I, I really like this idea and, but I think we need to pause on a few things and Parks and Rec being one of them. And I know Mr. Dean just spoke about, you know, revenue that it brings for the pool, okay? And, you know, based on the presentation that you've given, I mean, I don't think we should make decisions entirely based on revenue. That's not my hangup. But my, my hangup on just the Parks and Rec is between summer camp and the pool, we're catering to all demographics around town. And, you know, I know one of the talking points was the lessons we've learned from COVID in terms of tipping more or, or paying more to support local businesses. And I think that that's true. But I also look at, you know, there may be some demographic that either go to summer camp or use the pool, that resources are limited. And I would never, ever want a child to have to make a decision about utilizing all their resources to hydrate and not eat, or eat not hydrate. So that's why I was just curious about the cost. It wasn't so much for the revenue, that's important too.
Yeah.
But my, my number one concern is children having to make a decision, you know, if, if that's the case. The second thing is we, you know, I know we've modeled this after Portsmouth. Didn't Portsmouth revise their ordinance to not ban but encourage particularly because of Parks and Rec? And have we looked into that and talked to maybe the Parks and Rec Direct Department in Portsmouth?
So I've not spoken to the Parks and Rec Department in Portsmouth. Greg did share today, um, a document that was adopted, it was like a 2020, no, I don't have the date, January 2022. They reaffirmed the policy, but it had language, and I, I should have brought it, I did not think to bring it. It had lang, it was a little confusing, I'll be honest, because it had language in the beginning that was, um, basically, uh, we're providing this to encourage best practices, but then it still referenced the original, um, ordinance. And so frankly, it's confusing to me. Does that mean they're waiving all of this or not?
Right.
And I did reach out to, uh, to the health officer, that's who is the person who implements that in Portsmouth. I spoke to her before reading that policy and she was talking about enforcement, so I know they do enforce. Greg had said that he heard from his colleagues in Portsmouth, Parks and Rec is exempt from that process. I don't know the details, I wasn't able to talk with Kristin to get any more details on that. I do have some-
I'd be interested in having that conversation.
Yeah. I do have some dollar figures. Before we met earlier this week, I pulled together some, some dollar figures that I would be happy to step through. So the proud source water bottle, um, it's $5 for an eight-pack at Shaw's, 63 cents a unit. Um, so, so at a dollar 50, right now Greg sells water bottles for a dollar. Um, and he, they end up being 12 cents a unit. And so currently Greg earns, you know, after costs, 1320 if he sold 1,500 units. Um, that proud source, granted, it's a smaller quantity, so we'd need to figure out how to get more quantity at that same price point. But if you sold it at a dollar 50, you could pull 1305 for profit, so it's pretty close. Um, and then when I looked into reusable water bottles, there were two sources, one of which I'm not super excited because it's not a company that, they have some outsourcing practices, but Alibaba does have reusable white water bottles. Um, and so, and you could purchase those for 80 cents a unit. And so if those were sold at 250, you could actually, um, pull in $1,700 of profit. So it's an increase, but Melissa brought up a really good point and that's, we don't want getting water to be more expensive than getting soda because then kids will make, make the option for soda, so. Um, and then, let's see, yeah, that, those were the two reusable water bottles. The Alibaba was, I don't know if I said it yet or not, was eight cents, so it could be $1,700 worth of profit. But again, like I, you know, I want us to go into this eyes wide open, we don't have the answers to this. But that is why we intentionally included this transition process.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
Question probably for Kristin or, or, uh, the Sustainability Committee. Um, one of the things I, I was thinking about when you said Gatorade is that there are some important things for Gatorade to do, especially in the summer with the electrolytes that are necessary after all your sweating while you play. And that made me think of the, uh, national football games where the coaches get dunked with Gatorade from, from a barrel, right? So I think a question to ask, um, Parks and Rec is that they have the storage capacity for something like that and they could sell it by the cup? And what would that price differential be?
Yeah, and, and there's more to explore there in terms of what it means if Parks and Rec is serving product and what, what health codes they need to follow. Um, the other thing that still, still need to price out is Gatorade does come in individual packets that you then add to water bottles. So that could be a potential option, um, that could be explored.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Kristin, don't go far.
I'm sorry, Select, did you have any other questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, Selectwoman Blander?
So just bear with me because I have all kinds of questions. Um, I'll save the, I'm not, actually, I'll start with the enforcement. How do we anticipate enforcing number two of the enforcement? Is someone supposed to be on site? And that confuses me a little bit because we're not going to have a police officer there to enforce it or, or mark. I, I, it's just something, I don't need questions answered tonight. I'm going to throw some questions out though.
Okay.
Cause for the, for the final one, just, we have to educate people. If they're going to vote one way or another for this, we need to tighten some of the stuff up.
Right.
Okay, so there was that. And I, I am for this, I think it's important, we have to do things. I do think there needs to be, at the very least, an educational aspect of this before we maybe go too far, because I think there's too many unanswered questions, but we might have answers for the third hearing. So I'm open to that, I'm just saying, I, I agree that I think people support sustainability, but then I think of the number of people who vote in March compared to the number of voters we have. And I just want to make sure we're not going to get a big, huge pushback and discourage people from wanting to do more of this. This is a step. We have to do more than this, but this is a step and I want to try to keep this as positive as we possibly can to educate our public. So Gatorade, I'm glad you said that about the packets, I did not know. Um, I did talk to Greg and got some data, the Gatorade, he said he pays 67 cents, he sells them for $2. So budget, one of the budget questions that I have is this. We, the concession stand is open to our Parks and Rec for people who are doing, you know, tennis and, and not just the kids. There's a deficit at that pool and the concession stand adds to the positive of that. So we, he figures just this year alone, it was $5,000. So we have to take into consideration how that affects our budget realistically. So if, if the, if the pool, actually, I have numbers, sorry, bear with me. I have notes everywhere, I'm so sorry. But I keep writing things down. So 15,000 people paid for the pool, different demographics thinking about for who can afford what, okay? That said, the pool revenue was 45,000, 20,000 in expenses, 20,000 in wages just for the concession stand, okay? That left $5,000 that was applied to the pool loss. So the pool still had a loss, but at least the concession stand offset some of that loss. So when we're talking about other sources, we need to know more specifically what the cost of those sources are, so we know how it's going to affect us budget-wise.
Yeah.
It's realistic, I get we want to do this, it's important, but we also need to know what the cost of doing this is so we can respond that way too. The other thing I want, one more thing, I'm just going to throw out there is this, there's a cost of putting our water fountains in, which growing up here, we had them everywhere, but there's also a cost to using the water. So there's going to be a cost to Swayze Parkway for those water fountains, there's going to be a cost to Parks and Rec. And I don't think anyone knows what that cost is yet. So again, that's from a budget, budget perspective, not trying to throw monkey wrenches in this at all, just trying to fine-tune some things a little bit. I think that source list is going to be really important to, to know. And I'm glad to know that the Parks and Rec part about working with sustainability, because that was going to be another question that was already answered, that it, it's going to be a process of collaboration and it's not going to be a timeframe, it's not going to be, right, I mean, we all have a goal we need to work on to get to where we need to get, but we have to do it sensibly, so. And to keep in mind that I forgot my water bottle tonight, so I also want to keep in mind that there are kids, parents who are running around with their heads cut off and they forget their kids' water bottles, even if they have the greatest intention of refillable water bottles, so.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, I'm done. Sorry.
No.
I kind of went off a little bit.
That's why we're here to ask questions.
On a little bit, but yes, thank you so much.
Selectwoman Cohen?
Um, I have, uh, an ask, I guess, to modify the, the penalties and remedies. I think it would be, um, it would make smart, or it, it would make me feel more comfortable if there was something like, you know, if, if there's a violation or if somebody is not doing it correctly, is there a process, like could we meet, could we have a plan, you know, put a plan in place or something like that? So that we are doing, you know, having this be a positive thing versus like, you're not going to be allowed to be in our town anymore. Um, so that would be my ask in terms of changing this. I do think, I am, you know, I, I find myself being very supportive, I, one, I mean, one of the things that I really worry about is like, how many, how many of the steps are we actually taking here? And so I think, you know, having this be a first step is a good thing, like what is the outreach to businesses and restaurants and, and, you know, businesses in our towns that sell stuff, that produce stuff, you know, that, that's sort of my vision for next steps and like, the, you know, the recycling nightmare that we have about, about how it actually doesn't do much. So, so these are all sort of things that I'm thinking about. And I do think that it would make sense to, in this, Exeter Parks and Recreation will work with the Sustainability Committee. I, I think it would also make sense to involve the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, because I wonder about, you know, now we have that facility on-site, so there's like the potential for, and I don't, I don't know how I feel about even saying this in public yet, but like, could we have water bottles that the kids can leave there and you pay a deposit of $50 and then you get your water bottle washed? And like, you know, how can we sort of work with parents to mitigate some of this stuff to make up the revenue and then say, you know, okay, like we're going to pay these teenage kids to wash the water bottles, that's going to make up the revenue, that's going to, you know, make sure that we can, but, you know, I don't know, maybe there's something we can do there so that we are changing habits and creating, you know, sustainable habits for families and kids without having it be a hardship.
Yeah. Can I, I just thought of something when Molly, and, and maybe I missed it, what if somebody goes to a restaurant, takes, takeout and goes to the parks, one of the parks, they're fine with that, that's common?
Well, there's a definition, Chris, you want to explain that?
Yeah, that's covered in there, that, uh, you know, individuals that buy something at a convenience store, a restaurant, and bring it and eat it in the park and take it with them and just- them and dispose it properly. It's really about the distribution of product.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear out there and, thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, just to follow up on Selectwoman Cowan's comments and Selectwoman Gilman as well, and also Selectwoman Bellinger, and Selectperson Bellinger on that as well. The, you know, the powdered Gatorade and there's, there's an entire world out there of people that do athletics, that do things that don't use disposable plastics. I work in my full-time job as in the cycling industry. We just don't buy plastics and throw it away. We have plenty of hydration and nutrition and things like that. So the nice part is there really are alternatives. There's an entire world of distribution of products out there that does put things in sustainable packaging. We are, after meeting with Greg, we, you know, we're very sensitive to the concession stand and making sure that that maintains itself as a critical engine to balance the books over there. We understand that. And so, you know, maybe the language we need to look at is to, you know, look at, you know, what budget parameters, you know, are acceptable to increase it by to, with replacements and also develops the timeframe that might be more appropriate to sunset some of those products out. And really, somewhere in the language, but it might need to be more forceful is that, you know, as replacements become available, right? If we don't have a solution for Gatorade in a bottle, then we just can't replace it until we have a solution for it, right?
That's where I was kind of going with that, not to interrupt you, Chris, but, but it's, it's literally without having that source list.
Right.
We don't know and to have any sunset without that information seems premature to me. I think it's a great goal to have. We just need to do it sensibly.
Mr. Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, the three public hearings do not need to be consecutive, correct?
True.
Would it be advisable, we meet the fifth, as you know, in the 19th of December. I mean, I think, listening to the four of us and Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf at the last meeting when she was here, I mean, I think the five of us are very supportive of this and it's a great, it's a great first step of many that we need to take. And I think that, I mean, I know firsthand just how hard you've all worked on this for the last, you know, year and a half. Would it be advisable where you're not meeting again until December 6th, if I'm correct, which would be the day after the fifth? Mr. Ruffner, the Vice Chair of Arts and Culture, indicated that their committee doesn't meet until the 13th. Is that right, sir?
Yeah, whatever the second.
That's the second Tuesday. Would it be advisable to put the third hearing on the 19th to allow the Sustainability Advisory Committee to meet one more time to clean up language, some of the concerns you've heard over the first two hearings, also to maybe investigate a little bit further what Portsmouth does with Parks and Rec? Because I really think that's, that's one of the only holdups here. Would allow Arts and Culture, Mr. Ruffner or somebody, if you or someone from there could come back on the 19th and speak to that. I know it's, it's just two weeks after the fifth, I mean.
Plenty of time to hold tight.
You know, you've spent a year and a half working really hard to, I just think that might be a better idea.
It's great.
So that we're, because after that third hearing, the Select Board, if somebody makes a motion, they're going to vote to either adopt it or not adopt it and hopefully it's to adopt it. But I think cleaning that up a little bit and maybe coming back with some more information with the pricing, maybe Kristen, have you and Ms. Roy and Mr. Dean an opportunity to meet with Greg again and maybe have Greg here to speak?
We could, sure.
I just know for me, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable voting to support this, to have that cleaned up. And then one question, on the penalties and remedies, the written warnings and the subsequent infractions, that doesn't apply to town departments, correct? That's to people who permit?
I think that's a good question.
And who does, who issues the written warning?
Right. Yeah, how is it enforced, yeah?
So, so ultimately, this process is developed through the Health Department, like the authority to issue this is through the Health Department. I did meet with James Murray. He was concerned about workload. I said I would be okay if, being the person who gets called, if someone's like, someone's, you know. But, but at the end of the day, our hope is it's not punitive. And so I really like your suggestions, Molly, about language changes around that because that's, that's just not the intent. The intent is let's work together for a better process. And so, so I'm hopeful that we can come up with language that addresses that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just think the general public is going to like what Molly suggested. They'll be more open to it. When we're being told, no, 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 we tend to get our backs up, at least around town. So I just think it would, people would be more open. Yeah. And we want this first attempt to be successful so we can see where it leads.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others? So we'll meet back here on the 19th. That allows the Sustainability Advisory Committee another public meeting. Arts and Culture can take this up if they choose and Kristen, we can work with town staff and get some answers and maybe invite Mr. B. Son, give him notice to be here on the 19th. Perfect. Okay. Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We have another town ordinance on our agenda this evening. This will be the first reading for proposed sewer, proposed updated sewer regulations. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Should we close that last public hearing?
Yeah, we closed it. That's, we brought it back to the board.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm glad somebody's watching over me. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed town ordinance to update the sewer regulations.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Public hearing is open. The public has just departed. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the board. And Selectwoman Gilman is clerk. I would suggest maybe only reading the proposed changes, if that's okay with you?
That would be absolutely fine because, you know, this much stuff. I'm going to, I might do this in different parts because there are different sections that I have to scroll through here. Where did I miss it? So I'm just looking at the one that has the highlighted, the yellow. Sorry. Think I scrolled past it. I'm going to do it in pieces because they're so spread out through the document. I move to approve section 1507.1, which is general prohibitions. No person shall introduce or cause to be introduced into a POTW. Any pollutant or wastewater that causes pass-through or interference or has an adverse effect on the receiving stream.
Can I just, can you tell us what page you're on?
I am on.
Oh, it's at the bottom. Sorry.
That's all right.
I did.
Now, you're just, you're just reading, we're not moving anything tonight, right?
Right, I'm just reading, I'm sorry, I said I move.
Thank you.
Just reading the changes. It's page 20 of 52.
Thank you. I've gone right by it somehow.
Well, it's easy. There's a lot of things. The other change is on the next page to 1507.2N. Any pharmaceutical waste except for such pharmaceutical waste as are required by federal law to be disposed of by flushing into a municipal sewer system. And then on page 22, under section 1507.3, stormwater, surface water, groundwater, artesian well water, roof runoff, subsurface drainage, swimming pool drainage, condensate, deionized water, non-contact cooling water or otherwise unpolluted water, wastewater unless specifically authorized by the director in an IDP. And I did look up the IDP and I don't remember what it said.
Okay, I'll have to tell you, because you're reading it off the computer, my, our copies aren't highlighted, like on those.
Oh.
Yeah.
There are two copies. One should be highlighted.
There are three, actually.
Yeah, there are three.
There's the old one.
Just keep going. I will, I mean, I've got some that's highlighted, just not.
Okay, and then the addition of Part D, sludgees, screenings or other residue from the pretreatment of industrial waste unless specifically authorized by the director in an IDP. That's a kind of directive order. And let's see. Oh, boy. There is a change, excuse me, under 1507.6 for the maximum allowable industrial limitations on various pollutants. Do you want me to read all the pieces, parts or just changes to the chart?
The changes.
Yeah, there are changes to several levels of allowed industrial loading per day. And they involve things that we have talked about before, arsenic, cadmium, lead. And section, also in 1507.6, this is page 25, 26. Again, it's a chart of concentrations above which pollutants shall not be discharged. That was on 25 of 52.
Yeah, 25, got it.
And I know there's more. Oh, here we go. And a change on 1508.3, fats, oils and grease or fog and grit interceptors. It adds additional language that says the plumbing sewer or POTW shall be provided at the owner's expense when required by plumbing code. And then page 30 of 52, addition of 1508.4, amalgam separators. Any dental practice that is required by ENV-WQ-306 to have an amalgam separator shall properly install and maintain the separator. Under 1509.2, no significant indirect discharger shall discharge wastewater into the POTW without first obtaining an IDP from the director, except that a change. Significant indirect discharger that has filed a timely and complete application pursuant to 1509.4 of these regulations may continue to discharge for the time period specified These are changes that have come from our permitting with New Hampshire DES and the EPA, I believe. All right, this is a long one. This is page 34 of 52. 1509.8, hauled wastewater. A, septic tank, this is a new section. A, septic tank waste may be introduced into the POTW only at locations designated by the director and at such times as are established by the director, provided such waste do not contain unacceptable quantities of toxic pollutants or materials and provided such discharge does not violate any other special requirements established by the town. Transporting discharge of such waste shall comply with sections 15, 16 of this ordinance. B, the director may require generators and/or haulers or hauled industrial waste to obtain industrial discharge permits. The director may also prohibit the disposal of hauled industrial waste. All other requirements of these sewer regulations apply to the discharge of hauled industrial waste. C, industrial waste haulers may discharge loads only at locations designated by the director. No load may be discharged without prior consent of the director. The director may collect samples of each hauled load to ensure compliance with applicable standards. The director may require the industrial waste hauler to provide a waste analysis of any load prior to discharge. And D, industrial waste haulers shall provide a waste tracking form for every load. This form shall include at a minimum the name and address of the industrial waste hauler, permit number, truck identification, names and addresses of sources of waste and volume and characteristics of the waste. The form shall identify the type of industry, known or suspected waste constituents and a certification that the wastes are not hazardous wastes. And on page 34 of 52, changes to 1510.3. A, usually name, street address, mailing address and daytime telephone number. C, the general and specific conditions and prohibitions from these sewer regulations that apply to the discharge. D, a statement that the IDP is non-transferable without prior notification to the town in accordance with section 1510.6 of these regulations and provisions for providing the new owner or operator with a copy of the existing IDP. E, a list of pollutants, allowable parameters and discharge limitations. F, each condition specified in the NHDES's IDR approval. I, notification requirements for slug loading, one, slug loading, two, spills, bypasses and upsets, three, changes in volume and characteristics of the discharge for which a permit revision is not required, and four, permit violations. Continuing on to L, applicable definitions from these sewer regulations. And requirement to submit a completely new application at a specified frequency which shall not be less than once every five years. O, requirement to provide a copy of the permit to the NHDES if the NHDES so requests. And on page 36, P, notification that the state has legal authority to take direct action against the user to enforce the provisions of ENV-WQ-305.01 in accordance with RSA 485-a5, comma, Roman numeral four, printed in appendix C. And IDPs may contain but not limited to the following. List of following. When does this end? Oh, here we go. Under section 1511.10, record keeping, we have, the town may require a user to submit these records upon written request to local and state officials. Under 1512, powers and authority of inspectors, 1512.1, at least once a year, the town will inspect each significant indirect discharger for compliance with a discharge permit. And this inspection shall include sampling if the town determines that sampling is necessary to determine compliance. Page 49 of 52, 1516, septic disposal. 1516.1, no person shall discharge hauled septic into the town's wastewater POTW who does not hold a septic hauler permit issued by pursuant to RSA 485-a4, Roman numeral 16-a, no, yeah, 16-a. A copy of such permit shall be filed by the permit holder with the town. Upon renewal or revocation of such permit, the hauler shall be responsible for notification of such renewal or revocation to the town. The director may limit the quantities of septic that can be received or refuse to receive septic to ensure proper operation of the treatment facility pursuant to RSA Section 1516.2, septic hauler requirements. Permitted hauler may discharge septic to the facility provided at the town's wastewater provided at the town's wastewater treatment facility only after paying the charges as set forth in section fifteen sixteen point five of this ordinance. Section B, those persons, firms, corporations, municipal subdivisions, or institutions that conform to the state's definition of RVs shall dispose of such septic as human excrement or other petr- petrisible, petrisible materials at the dates, times, and locations designated by the director. And C, no person, firm, corporation, municipal subdivision, or institution shall discharge any toxic, poisonous, radioactive solids, liquids, or gases, or the contents of grease, gas, oil, and/or sand interceptors into the town's wastewater treatment facility without specific authorization of the director. Fifteen sixteen point three, temporary septic permits. The director may issue a temporary permit to allow the discharge of septic, of septic at a point of discharge other than the wastewater treatment facility in a situation where such temporary discharge point is necessary to protect the health and welfare of the town. The director shall issue such permit upon such terms and conditions as the director deems to be in the best interests of the town. The temporary permit shall not be valid for a period exceeding twelve months. The director shall have the right to revoke or suspend the temporary permit in the event that the terms and conditions are not met. Section fifteen sixteen point four, septic permits. Any septic hauler who intends to dispose of septic within the limits of the town shall first obtain a permit from the town. B, such permits as issued by the town shall identify, one, the motor vehicle, two, the tank capacity, three, the NHDES permit number, and four, any other details of compliance with NHDES rules. C, the following conditions shall constitute conditions precedent to the issuance of each permit by the town. One, each septic tank truck shall be equipped with either a site level by which the quantity of the contents of each tank may be ascertained by a site or an access port through which the quantity of the contents of each truck may be ascertained by depth measurements. Two, prior to the discharging the load, the hauler shall record the following information analog at the POTW. A, the hauler's name. B, date. C, time of disposal. D, volume disposed. E, origin of load, property owner's name, address, and telephone number. And F, nature of the waste, e.g., grease or septic being disposed. Three, the hauler shall be responsible to see that septic or holding tank wastewater does not leak on the ground near the discharge point and that all exposed areas were washed to remove traces of septic or holding tank wastewater. Four, owners of RVs who intend to dis- who intend to discharge or contents of holding tanks are exempt from the permitting process. Section fifteen sixteen point five, septic disposal charge. There shall be a septic, septic disposal charge as established by the town's current fee schedule for the receipt of septic into the town's POTW for treatment. In the event that the permutee has either a defective site level, no site level attached to the track, and/or no access to the contents of the truck for depth measurement, the permutee shall be charged according to the full tank capacity at the time of discharge or by other method determined by the director. Am I done yet? Yes, I think that is it.
There goes it.
Really?
Yep, fifty-two pages.
Thank you.
But those are the changes as proposed by actually DES?
Does more highlighted stuff be on there? Is that not necessarily to talk about?
I would, well, I wasn't sure about that because those are state laws or state rules.
Then they're not necessarily to talk about. Good. I just want to make sure.
Any, any questions for Mr. Dean?
Nope. Septic wastewater, you know.
Let me get back. There was just one where it said may and I wondered if it should say shall, but did I lose it? I didn't.
Well, that might be a matter of.
No, I read along with you. I, I have to follow along. I can't, I can't be read to. It's crazy. It was on page fourteen, forty-one of fifty-two. Fif, one five, one, one point one zero. And the highlighted part says the town may require a user to submit these records upon what, written request to local or state officials. I guess we can't, now that I said, think of, say it out loud, sorry. Um, we can't say shall if it's just state or local. Yeah, only, uh, sorry, never mind. Never mind.
This is, this is like state and, and department issued language that we need to adopt. And we haven't done it in a while, so.
No, I understand that, but, and I, if it was just to local, I would suggest we say she.
Yeah.
But because, as I read it again, it said state, I am withdrawing my thoughts on that. How's that? I do understand the process, but.
Mr. Dean, the second reading, December fifth?
Yes, that's the plan. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving along. The next discussion item was a ongoing discussion about boards and committees. And you'll all remember, back in, I believe, October of two thousand twenty-one, the board tasked Selectwoman Ratriolif and I to look at our boards and committees, policies and procedures, makeup, et cetera. And we presented at that time our homework and what our recommendations were. And we had a discussion amongst the board at that time. And we took the suggestions back. She and I have met a couple more times. And this has been delayed only because we've had other pressing issues to deal with, but this was one of our goals and objectives this year. So she and I got together last week and put this together. And I know she's not here this evening, but this is the product of both, both of our work. So I want to thank her for her help on this. I'll go through the recommendations real quickly. We can have a discussion. Term limits. We, we did a peer review of similar like municipalities here in New Hampshire and we found that there is no practice of limiting the number of terms one may serve. And that included land use boards as well as committees. Our recommendation is that the town of Exeter not adopt a policy of limiting the number of terms that one may serve. However, we would suggest that it may be worth investigating a true term rotation between regular voting members and alternates. That would not be applicable, obviously, to boards and committees to which members are elected at town meeting. New member appointee orientation, we recommend, we had suggested perhaps the assistant town manager and HR director, but obviously would be whoever she and Mr. Dean would want to delegate it to, if not for Ms. Roy, to conduct an orientation with all new committee and board members. That orientation would include introduction to department staff assigned to that committee, as well as the chair of that committee, and the select board representative to that committee. And part of that training would be a thorough review of ninety-one A. Goals and objectives, the recommendation is for a goals and objectives process for all boards and committees. Annually, we suggest that all boards and committees submit their goals and objectives to the select board. That can be done in writing. It could be done through the select board representative, who would then monitor the goals and objectives of that year, making sure that they're being met. And then on a quarterly or by annual basis, report back to the select board. Obviously, there are exceptions to this, which would include the planning board, ZBA, HDC, Budget Recommendations Committee, to name several. We recommend promoting collaboration between committees. We quoted from the master plan. Obviously, the more that there's collaboration between the committees, we've talked about that recently. That would be beneficial. Biannual meeting of all committees and boards. I know we're talking about having an all-board committee in February. We'll speak to that. It's the next discussion item. And also for boards and committees, again, excluding the land use boards, to review their mission statements and charges on maybe an annual basis or as deemed necessary. We recommend that the select board review the list of committees annually and consider consolidating or discontinuing a committee, as well as revising the number of members to better ensure a quorum.
Shouldn't that be quorum?
That's why we have this, right? Meeting frequency. Again, we talked about that. Recommend to boards and committees that they review how often they meet. Most meet on a monthly basis, some bi-monthly. Maybe they don't need to meet as much. Maybe some should meet more. But obviously, that's something that should be reviewed. And last but not least, we felt very strong about attendance. The select board, in fact, adopted an attendance policy that states, quote, "Committee members that fail to attend at least sixty percent of the meetings in any calendar year may forfeit their membership and be subject to removal by the select board." The chair of each committee shall, in January, forward an annual report of member attendance to the select board for review. Our recommendation proposal is for this policy to continue and that we start to enforce it and have the committee chairs submit that attendance sheet annually. So open it up for discussion. Anyone jump in?
Yeah, I have one. We, we've talked about it periodically as we've had people apply for being an alternate when there's been a full voting member empty slot. And at one point, a board, a selectman, I don't remember which makeup it was, had requested the board or committee to recommend who moves up and who is going to take the full-time slot after they talk amongst themselves. So something like that should be in here. That really the full voting seat shouldn't be filled before we assign somebody to be an alternate when there's an opening. Or appoint someone, I should say.
Thank you. That's an excellent addition to this. And that's come up recently.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, we'll add that. Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman. Any other? Before we move to Selectwoman Belander?
Uh, no.
You can always come back.
Okay. So I was glad to see, and I wasn't on the board when this project was started, but I did watch the meeting, so I am, I think, for the most part, just speed on the intent here. I'm really glad that you, the suggestion is not to do term limits. I think if we consider that, we're undervaluing historical knowledge. And so, thank you for that.
Can I just add on to that?
Yes.
That rotation of two years as a full member rotated down to an alternate member was something that was kind of informally done on the planning board, but not copied by other boards, so it's good to put it in writing.
I've been on for a while. In his, in the past it has? Because it hasn't been for.
I know. It was informal and it dropped off.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I didn't know that. The one suggestion I'm going to ask to be considered as under goals and objectives. And that instead of it being the first ninety days of the calendar year, I'm going to ask that we consider that to be more like June first. And there's a reason. And it's, I know we fill slots throughout the year when they're vacant and people volunteer, but the appointments come up in April. So I think asking goals to be done in January when it's possible that those aren't the same people. It's not an exact science thought here, but I'm just saying.
It's an excellent point, actually.
I really think that we would want to try to have as many people that are going to work on that committee for a year to be part of the goals.
That's a great point.
Yep.
Good point. Okay?
Yep. And one more. On the frequency. That doesn't eliminate work sessions, correct? I mean, I know with the Housing Advisory Committee, we typically meet once a month, but there have been a few times with some of the event planning we did.
I think it's up to each committee.
So I just wanted to make sure that, I'm sorry, attendance. Does that include alternates as well? It doesn't say in the language. It just says committee members. So that does include full and alternates or no?
I mean.
For attendance?
Yes.
I took that as a direct quote.
I believe at the time we did it, it was for full voting members or full quorum members.
I'm going to ask that we consider having everybody. Because even the alternates are appointed and they're expected to, to, no, I understand. I mean.
Well, you know, no, 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 that's a great point. Because if you're, if you're an alternate and you're, and there's an opening and you're going to be considered, but your attendance has been thirty percent, then I think that would factor into not being considered to become a full time.
It's just a thought I had. I noticed it was a little vague, so.
Well, I know some, but I know some committees, the staff survey, who can be there on Thursday. And it's just about a meeting, so it's not a public document or open to ninety-one A because it's just about, can you meet? I don't know that it happens on every land use board. I know it happens on the two I sit on. Particularly because, you know, we need a quorum to, for the HDC to make a decision, make a vote, and do something for an application. So I don't know if that needs to be worked in here, that the staff would organize the enforcement that there is a quorum of people to meet, which would bring in the.
I know the planning board does. Dave does it. The chair does it, so.
I mean, the chair, like.
But that's not, but what I meant was I think that alternates should also, it shouldn't matter if you're, if you're a voting member or an alternate because alternates have to be able to step up to be a voting member.
Right. So you're saying they should be there regardless?
Well, yeah, I.
Oh, I think, I think so. I mean, I use the planning board as an example. I mean, they, if you have, if you have the full board plus all the alternates, you know, obviously the alternates don't vote, but they participate.
Right. And I was an alternate on the planning board, right.
You know, and number one, and number two, a lot of these projects run over multiple meetings. So if you're going to step in one night as an alternate and you haven't been to the last five meetings, I mean, I just.
Yeah, so as an alternate, there was an expectation that I needed to be ready. That, that same case number could have been heard at three or four meetings. I might not have been a voting member on the first three, but by the fourth one, if the chair has to appoint, you have to be ready. So I just think it's an important thing to consider that alternates should be included in that language.
And I think that was another good point. I mean, I know all the committees that I've worked with, the chairs usually ensure a quorum. You know, River Advisory does sustainability, you know, Planning Board did, facilities did. But we can, we can put the language in here, memorialize it, that somebody should be doing that. That's.
I think so. I'm, I'm not sure that it really should be up to the chair, at least of the land use boards, to do that, but that's.
I don't know. I just, I just always, if I couldn't make it, which was very rare, I would email the chair and let them know. But there's not, that's just me. I did that on my own, so. But I know Dave does that. Dave Sharplest does it with the planning board.
Well, I know, you know, for sustainability and River Advisory, the chairs send out the agenda and just ask folks to email them if they're not going to be there to ensure a quorum.
She's helped to look to see. Barbara always sends us the packet, but I guess.
I don't know firsthand, but word on the street is the Rec Advisory Committee does the same like they know beforehand. So I think a lot of them do it.
I think, well, I'll speak for the HDC. No. The staff does. But the staff knows if we have applicants or not, so. That's, I don't know how to word that in there, but.
Okay, we can.
Maybe it's part of it. Maybe it's not.
What's your experience been?
I mean, I think that one of the things that I'm interested in seeing in this is like, how do, how do we, how do we broaden our scope of like involvement? And how do we get more people? Because one of the things that we're really running up against is lack of participation and communication. And people are not, or people sign up to serve and then don't show up or can't show up or feel bad about stepping down. And so like.
Well, that was one of the things in the, and I don't know how to encapsulate it in here, but it's, one of the things that was actually in the master plan update was, and, and we've all talked about it previous times, is, is what to do with childcare.
Yep.
Because if you want both parents to volunteer or when to do it on Tuesday and when to do it on Thursday, you know, that.
do it on Thursday, you know, that can be a problem, especially in these nighttime meetings. And we've never been able to come up with a solution for that. You know, where's a safe place to put your children? If we work out with the Seacoast School of Technology and their department, they're way over there, and our meetings last an hour, three hours, you know?
Depends on the committee.
Yeah, and, and what nights they meet, you know?
I know, and that, that is hard to bake into, sort of, so I don't even know if it belongs in there, but it's like the thing to think about.
Yeah, no, it doesn't belong in here, but we definitely need to offer it. So I think that is one of the limitations that I've heard from people, that I'd love to be on that committee, but I don't have the time, like the planning board needs twice a week and, or twice a month. Plus, plus representation on other boards and committees, so it's a heavy lift.
It is a heavy lift. But I mean, the other thing that I like about this proposal is it really, it encapsulates the Select Board's responsibilities with the committees, which I think...
It's important.
Is very important.
Yep.
Because I don't, I mean, we don't have a TV, so like I, you know, sometimes I'll catch the meetings on Facebook when they're streaming live, and if, if there's something that I need to watch, I'll go catch it, but I, I mean, I don't watch the committee meetings, so I depend on all of you to share what's going on in your various committees.
That's why I write my reports the way I do, so that we're sharing everything with each other, so we all know.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and I think with, with trying to populate these committees too, the next thing after we get to this is really going to have to look at how we might be able to consolidate.
Yep.
And too bad we couldn't offer Zoom attendance to some meetings.
I know.
Because that would help people with...
It would.
The childcare, I know.
It would.
Out of our hands, right? But it's, it's something that I hope at some point, we kind of have that option.
Can you keep working on that in your other job?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because it's really, would help. But thank you for all the work on this.
No, it's, so I'll incorporate these suggestions and we'll bring it back in December. I don't want to let this slip again, so we'll look at whichever agenda has room for this. I mean, we'll just go through it one more time, and it's something that, it's a work in progress.
Okay, great.
So I thank all of you for your suggestions, as the Selectwoman Roundtree Olafso. Okay, all board meeting follow-up. The library community room is available on, there were three dates given to us. They have a projector and screen. EX-TV is able to video with cameras for posting, but it cannot be shown live.
That's the part, yeah.
So if it's, but if it's taped and posted, is that okay?
Yes, it can't be, and I don't think anyone, if they needed to be there and got sick, they can't attend the Zoom. I don't think that's an option.
No.
When I said that, I think I misspoke about the projector and the visual aids. That's not what I meant.
No, no, I understood what you meant.
Yeah, okay.
So do we want to go forward with that room, rather than town hall?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah, I think we should engage more with the library.
And then, I know, I know Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf is not available on Saturdays, so do we want to? And I think that might be an imposition for committee and board members.
In general.
I mean, Wednesday evening would probably be ideal. So does anybody have, do any of your preferences? I'm available...
I don't. I mean, I'm assuming, because this came from Pam, the, the calendar only goes out with committee.
I'm going to get, yeah, I'm going to get to that.
So it makes it hard for me to...
Well, you won't have any other committee meetings that night, because we'll all be together.
We will, but I don't want anyone having to reschedule. And I don't want to miss any more conservation commission.
I know.
So I don't have a preference, so I'm going to leave it up to you.
I'm fine.
Looking at my calendar now.
Okay.
I thought I responded in there somewhere.
Yeah, because the 8th is after deliberative.
Yep.
February...
There was one you couldn't do, I think.
The 15th.
Okay, that's good.
Then, I think we're kind of on the 8th then.
Well...
It sounds fine for me.
All right, Mr. Dean, can you book February 8th?
Will do.
And it doesn't have to be, I mean, do we want to do it earlier?
It's like 30?
I mean, I, because I'm flexible, so you folks tell me.
We have time to, like in the next month, to solicit...
If you don't want to do it all in one night?
Well, to solicit from our board members if they, you know, have a druther.
All right. All right, we've got the date, we've got the date, we've got the place.
I'm excited.
Two out of three.
Yay!
And then, Mr. Dean, I know we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, can we get a year's worth of dates? For instance, we talked about, like, the planning board always meets the second and fourth, the HDC, I mean, the CONCOM is what, second Tuesday?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruffner indicated that the Arts and Culture is the second Tuesday.
That's the zoning board.
Rec Advisory is always the last Tuesday.
All of our committees have a regular schedule. We used to always have that.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if Pam reaches out to all the chairs and gets there, and then that way, it's not set in stone, it can always be changed, but at least to Selectwoman Belanger's point, it's nice to be able to go in and, and of course, Select Board, that can always change depending upon holidays.
But when we have to make those changes?
Yep.
We know what is already typically in there.
Yep.
And so, and then the other thing, just as a suggestion, when I was the chair of the Housing Advisory Committee, I would go through the next year's dates, and the last meeting of the year, we'd go through January, the following years. And if they ran on a holiday, we were scheduling them, then changing the dates, so, just a thought.
Nope, and a good one. All right, regular business, there are no abatements, credits, or exemptions, nor do we have any permits and approvals. And Mr. Dean, if you're done taking notes, we'll take your town manager's report, okay?
Just to let the board know, Christina Restuccia, who's our new HR assistant, started in the office on November 18th.
Fantastic.
So Ms. Roy has helped now, which is, we're all very happy about that.
Good evening, yay!
Internally, we haven't stopped clapping since that started. I did attend the NHMA conference last week, it was very informative. That was on November 16th and 17th in Manchester, so glad to have been able to attend that. There were two Budget Recommendations Committee meetings last week, on November 15th and the 17th. The 15th was Water Sewer, the 17th was Budget and CIP. The 17th was a fairly long meeting, as those who were able to attend know. We are continuing to meet with Public Works to review progress on the DOL audit that I mentioned at the last meeting, so we're actually making very good progress, and I just want to acknowledge Melissa's efforts in that. She's been great at helping the department along in some of the issues that we've had to, to address. Work on the tax bills continues. The town rate was set, or the overall rate was set, at $24.75 a thousand. That's an increase of 74 cents. The town rate has gone from 5.79 to 5.96, that's an increase of 17 cents per thousand. Also want to acknowledge Corey Stevens and his work on getting the tax bills together, and Melissa Height, our new deputy tax collector, she's done a great job, and we expect to have the bills out shortly. And then the last thing on my list was the, last year, we had an employer appreciation day, and we would be proposing another one this year, as a thank you to our employees for, for a great year. And we are looking at December 23rd if the board's amenable to that.
I know I fully endorse that. Thoughts from the board?
Oh, it's wonderful.
Okay.
I think the only reason why you didn't do it before was COVID, right? That's the only time it hasn't happened?
Yeah, the first time we did it was last year.
Yeah, last year.
Right, so yes. Would you say for a date?
No, 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 this is a...
Oh, a different?
Yes, this is in, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, sorry.
This was, to appreciate, we, we did this last year, to appreciate our employees, where, where the holiday fell on a week, we, we gave an extra day off.
That, I totally misunderstood what you were saying. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
But...
Oh, I think that's perfect, December 23rd even.
Yes.
Oh, I love it.
But I know what you were talking about, and, and we haven't done the appreciation for volunteers, because when COVID hit, obviously, we were not meeting, but the town manager and, and the, and Pam McElroy, once again, are going to be issuing the same gift certificates in lieu of the appreciation day here. It...
So they decided not to do it?
Folks were, well, I think, you know, it hits every, every volunteer gets something, whereas opposed, you know, when you had something here hosted, you know, volunteers are working, they didn't have time to come.
That's about it.
And, well, number, number two, it promotes, the gifts, the gift certificates are from the Chamber of Commerce, and it promotes our local businesses, and in terms of the money cost out of the budget, it's comparable, so...
Okay, so maybe in the future, what it was, and I get what you're saying, we should try to do one thing a year, to get the volunteers together, so they're, they're meeting and not at a meeting. They don't have work to do. They're actually, you know, having conversations, it's a social thing. So something to think about.
Sure.
I, I just think it was a really good, I know not everyone could make it, but if they give, are given enough of a notice, it just was a nice thing to do. Anyway, sorry.
I just, no, no, and I agree with you, I just, you know, the last two that we had before COVID, I mean, they weren't really well-attended, I mean, it was, I think it was just as much staff as it was.
Well, the timing was a little tight. I think there were four to six.
Yeah.
That is tough for people between four and six to get home.
Maybe if we say, if you come, we'll give you a gift certificate.
No, I just think it...
That's a quid pro quo thing, get a little advicey there.
The four to six is a little tough. Most people are just getting back to town by 5:30.
Yeah.
No, I know, listen, I was, always tough for me when I was commuting, so...
Yeah.
Or, we could do a committee softball game.
Yeah, no. I'll watch.
No, so will I, but...
Sorry, thank you.
We'll be the umpires and stuff, right?
I have a garage full of equipment that I can donate to, to that one.
For the day, right?
Something that happens at the state, so...
Oh, I'm excited for the town employees, December 23rd.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well deserved.
I have a poem about not playing softball.
Swayze?
So we have a public hearing scheduled for December 5th.
Okay.
On the Swayze Parkway petition for CyPress in the deviation petition. So at that hearing, people will be able to make comments and so forth, and that is part of the, the overall petition process.
Okay, so what, what happens? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just asking where that will be.
That'll be right here in the town office, in the NOVAC room.
Thank you.
As part of the meeting, sorry.
Oh, good.
And what happens after we open the public hearing, folks opine, comment? We close the public hearing, then does the board, what's the board's responsibility at that point?
At that point is just to notify the, the agency, the director of charitable trusts that we've held the hearing.
Okay.
And the probate court as well, that'll be part of that process.
Okay.
In fact, the hearing is more tied to the probate court than it is the charitable trust.
And does that have anything to do with the vote, or it's just a procedural?
Just a procedural.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So we don't have to worry about the fact that we don't have the packets on, available till Friday afternoon, and we're going to talk about it Monday night? Is there a way we can, I don't know?
Well, I don't think there's any, I mean, what's...
We've advertised in two public places, plus a newspaper.
That this is going to be December 5th?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't seen it, so, all right.
Sorry. Where, where was it posted, Mr. Dean?
Uh, two public places.
Which were?
Uh, the website was one, and then downstairs.
Okay.
And then the newspaper as well, advertisement.
I saw Santa.
And in terms of preparation, there's, it's just, we open the hearing for folks to comment, correct?
That's right.
The vote was the vote, and this is just a procedural step as we move forward to probate court?
We'll have an opinion?
Correct, this is required by the RSA. It's just, it's a public hearing that's required by the, by the law.
But we'll have an opinion from probate or charitable trust, or whoever, yeah, charitable trust.
She asked if there'd be an opinion from the charitable trust or the probate, I mean, there's no, it's just, my understanding from you is that the charitable trust has done their due diligence, and before they can refer this on to the probate court, we have to have a procedural public hearing?
Right.
Okay.
And from what I understand from you...
I'm sorry, the probate court requires the public hearing.
But the charitable trust has done their due diligence.
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. Has, has Attorney Mitchell, like, put anything in writing?
Not as of yet, on that.
Okay.
You know, I'd feel...
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but I'd feel more comfortable if we could have something from Attorney Mitchell advising us as to the process, that we can put in the packet under correspondence at the next meeting, so that folks that follow this have something in writing in a packet that they can review before we actually have the public hearing, and we could push it to the 19th?
Yes.
I know we're pushing everything to the 19th, but I, I don't feel comfortable that, I know we have satisfied the law in terms of the two public notices, but nobody knows what the hearing is for, so if, if Walter between now and the 5th can get something in writing that we can put in our packet for folks to review.
Yeah, so we, we will, we will do a couple of things. One is that we will have the petition available at the public hearing. That is one of the elements of data that is...
Yep.
Offered at the hearing, and then a brief description of work and review, you know, the review of what is to be done. So a reflection of what was approved in the 22-town meeting. So those two things at a minimum will be part of the public hearing.
Okay. But not before the public hearing? And my concern is that people are coming not knowing what is going to happen.
Well, they've only had, you know, two days to review the packet, right?
Right. But if it's something from the packet, like you said, that letter, a letter explaining what the process is going to be, or what it's going to cover, I just think it's a good way to communicate to the public.
I just want to make sure we're, we're completely transparent.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, you know...
Can we, can we just post a draft under, you know?
Well, I was going to suggest that. If you want, we can put the petition online.
Like now?
And we're, we're happy to, we're happy to do that.
Yeah.
I just want to give folks two weeks to prepare. If they're going to come, if they're that passionate that they want to come and participate is, is their right in the public hearing. I want to be transparent and give folks enough time to read it, absorb it, ask questions, do research, I think that's only the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Understood.
I've still had, I still have people coming up to me, some people from River Woods recently, asking and trying to understand this process, so...
And it follows everything we've done up till now, we've been completely transparent all along, so I just, you know...
I think some people are a little confused because of the timeframe in between the warrant article passing and nothing happening. So in some people's minds, if it didn't happen, it's going away?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that will be posted on the website?
We'll put it up tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Dean?
No, no from me.
Okay. Oh, holiday parade.
Ah!
Yes.
December 3rd?
Yes, December 3rd.
From?
5:30 is the kickoff.
Right.
So we're supposed to be there at 5:30.
Okay.
Do we know if we're walking or arriving this year?
I don't know for sure.
All right.
We'll have to check on that.
Yeah, we lost out on that, somebody got first dibs last year, or the last two years.
Okay, so holiday party, what are we missing? That's it? Great, thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
Select Board Committee reports, Select Woman Cowan?
We don't have anything.
Nothing, okay, Select Woman Gilman?
All we had was the Heritage Commission meeting. We skipped over the L-Chip funding for Perkins Cemetery. Just no one, the proponent wasn't ready for it. Talked about the recommendations for the Registry of Historic Buildings for the Town Hall, and gathering a group together of people of interest, committees and commissions of interest to work on it, and also made a vote to go ahead for that grant that I've been talking about from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, and to give me and/or Dave Sharple's the authority to sign the documents. We did talk a little bit about the summary narrative for the neighborhood heritage area around Park Street, and just finishing up the letter. And then there was a follow-up on the watering trough placement, which is already happening, so there wasn't a whole lot of action. Oh, and we did discuss how to document buildings that have been demolished, because we take photographs of them, but we need to, there's a question of whether they go with the planning or the building departments demolition, you know, building file, or do we have a separate file, and/or do we have a separate file of just things that have been demolished? And being sure that we get a copy of the photos documented to the Historical Society.
Was the, I didn't watch the meeting, was the letter that was written?
The Chair was going to write a response.
Okay. All right. Select Woman Belanger?
Can I follow up on the Heritage with a question?
Sure.
I'm getting emails on that issue. I need to, I want to clarify something. My comment at the meeting last Monday was that it's my understanding that the Select Board really has no say over the committees, the Heritage Commission, in particular, saying that that could never come back up again.
Correct.
Okay. Because there's some confusion over the thing. And I won't get into it, but I just want to make sure that I am not the only one that understands that the Select Board can't tell a future Heritage Commission that they can't bring this issue up again.
No, you're correct, this is, the Heritage Commission is a state-defined land use board with certain, you know, specific purposes, mostly to educate and disseminate information, preserve whatever we have the money to preserve, accept money and actual physical property, but it is not something under the purview, what it does is not under the purview of the Select Board. It is a, it's a state, the town elected to establish a Heritage Commission back in 2005, I think.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because I just want to...
So the only role we play is appointing?
Members.
Members. Right, I mean, I'm happy to listen to people who have concerns, but, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate.
I appreciate the question, thank you. You didn't have any other?
No.
Okay.
Thank you Julie for explaining that. Yeah, so winter parking ban. And this is just a brief update on where I'm at, so no one thinks I've let it disappear. I did meet with Jennifer Perry and Jay Perkins on November 1st, and we have more than 40 overnight parking spots. I'm focusing mostly on municipal parking lots here, the two here and Center Street. My understanding is there's been some outreach to the Department of Public Works to do down near the boat house, the boat ramp, that they said that can't happen for snow removal purposes, you can't add more spots there. So right now, we have 40, with the possibility of adding 14. The three projects that have been approved and should be starting soon if they haven't already, won't have people living in them for this winter parking ban, so that's why I'm not too concerned. However, we do need to find a way to monitor or get the data on how many of the 40 we have right now are being utilized, so we know how many more we might need. We have 19 units with no parking that's been approved. So, I'm not discouraging this, it's in our ordinance, but I want people to have a place to park through the winter parking ban. Fire Department said they could drive down the road and not worry if we didn't have the parking ban. Public Works said absolutely not for snow removal purposes. Police said, they'd deal with it either way, but I just think it's not part of the discussion right now is to remove it, though I have brought it up. That said, there is a study that's in the budget, in the CIP, and I want to just stress to people who might have questions about this, it's the Downtown Traffic Parking Study, it's on page nine of the CIP. Part of the data that that study would bring to us is a better understanding of our needs, for exactly what I'm talking about, it's not the only reason, but it would be really important. So shy of me camping during the winter parking ban, all night waking up and taking inventory of how many cars are parked in the spots. We really need to have that data, and since it's overnight, yeah.
Do your numbers include the train station?
I'm not including the train station because that's not downtown parking. I can't imagine during a winter parking ban, someone's going to park at the train station and then walk down to the Ioka for a condo, to where they live, a little dangerous.
Yeah, oh, no, I don't disagree, but...
Yeah, no, that's why I said, the 40 are only for this, these two municipal parking lots and Center Street. And I have handouts for everyone. That's mine with my scribbles. You can have to make a copy for Melissa.
Okay.
Please, that's yours, and that way, just in case you have questions, Molly, and I'll put Lovey's in her mailbox.
I had a question, and maybe it's from the...
And just so you know, that Jay Perkins will have lines the next time we get this, because it's really hard to follow.
Ms. Cowan, you're the Selectwoman Rep. to the Planning Board?
Oh, I am.
Oh, good. Have you started discussing zoning ordinance changes, one of them being parking?
It's already in our ordinance, I'm not sure which density is the only one that's coming up, and Dave hasn't given us a final.
Okay, well, the town planner was looking into a grant for that parking study, and so I just wondered if...
Yeah, no, that hasn't come up, I mean, that's part of budget. Yeah, but I will say that the parking study, when the cumulative idea of these units came up, the Planning Board got behind the study being in this, on the Warren article this year, so. And then I just have one more, sorry. So, we'll bring the parking thing back up in the spring, that's my point. Conservation was November 8th. They talked about a flood plan draft ordinance to amend it from one feet to two feet. It would basically only, the main changes are for buildings along the Water Street area and the water treatment plan on Portsmouth Ave. There was also discussion on including an advisory area. They stressed that this would not increase or affect flood insurance policies. There was a kayak program that happened on September 25th, 10 participants. They rented a kayak for $8 a day that included life jackets. A lot of first timers that attended out of the 10, and there was no problem with them launching there from the little launch that they put in, so that was pretty exciting. They were first timers and had no incidents and didn't end up in Swayze, in the water. There was also talk of a possible community garden, there's been interest for years. One of the possibilities was on the south side of Raines Barn. There's a well and electricity already there. Parking is a limitation in that area with room for maybe only six cars, and it's not really close to town. My words, not my words, somebody else's. Trail maintenance was November 3rd, I did watch that, because I was here for communications, it was... They're just really stressing on how to make our trails more user-friendly. People have gotten lost, some have gotten hurt. So there was just a lot of discussion about that, and then communications between Leander owners, who have been allowing access to their property that connects to conservation land. And I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Tuesday of last week, I attended the Public Safety Complex Open House, and Select Woman Belanger was there as well, as Mr. Dean popped in before the budget meeting. Unfortunately, it wasn't as well-attended as we would have liked, but we had, you know, our chiefs, chiefs, deputy chiefs, and respective staff were there. Joanna was there, and got a tour, and I think, good to see the fire trucks up close, right? And Wednesday, I attended the Swayze trustee meeting for Select Woman Roundtree Olaf. It was a brief meeting, I updated them on the Swayze Park public hearing, the lifting of the water restriction, and also the vandalism that we addressed last week. They opened the bids for the maintenance of the park, and that was basically that meeting. And along with Select Woman Gilman and Select Woman Belanger respectively, attended the CIP budget meeting last week. And we will look forward to their recommendations, we'll formally thank them at that time, but they worked very, very hard as usual and vetted the budget, and we're going to look forward to their recommendations. Correspondence, real quickly, we had one piece of correspondence from Holland Company thanking us for invitation to bid on the water treatment chemical needs. However, they are, they will not be offering a bid because they do not supply the chemicals that we need, but they wished us all the best with our bid. Looking at the board calendar, December 5th, December 19th, and it looks as if both meetings will be busy. And at this time, I would entertain a motion if the board was inclined to enter into... Go ahead.
Remind people, Santa's mailbox and, ah, Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, of course, yep, no. Again, the holiday parade on the 3rd, Santa's mailbox is up for letters to Santa. And I know the elves are ready to work on Santa's behalf. And for those celebrating Thursday, we wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully enjoy a nice, long weekend.
Get those Santa letters in by December 16th, don't wait.
Thank you. Okay, so if the board was inclined to entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A, colon, 3, 2, A and C?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, a roll call?
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Madam Clerk says aye.
Motion passes 4-0, we'll move into non-public.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16, and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.